I'd like to call the meeting of the Upton Select Board to order, December 3rd, 2024. Please stand for the pleasure of the lesions.
The United States and to the Republic Promotion of One Nation Under God Indivisible with the Great Texas Trail.
I know. And now we're going to temporarily adjourn the meeting to go. What are we doing?
Recession.
Recession the meeting. Semantics, love semantics. To go into the downstairs for the swearing in ceremony of our new business officer. Awesome.
Sure, I'm just putting up a little slide so that if anyone joins us, they'll be able to.
Temporarily.
See that.
We are actually exactly on time. It is 6:15. And the next order of business, if we're out of recess, are we?
Yes.
Okay. Next order of business is the recognition Department Board updates, acceptance of donation for the direct by the Director of Elder and Social Services.
Okay, so I'm going to need a list for first time in the board to tag it is a donation from a donor of $500 in gift cards to support residents in need and Upton. And the director is looking for the acceptance of the donation.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that the Select Board vote will go into Mass General Act, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept donation to the town of Upton Department of Elder and Social Services from an anonymous donor in the amount $500 in gift cards to support residents in need.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, and I'd like to express our appreciation to the anonymous donor. It was very generous.
Very.
All right, Town Manager Report.
Okay. Um, uh, we have hard copies of Town Manager of reports, so just briefly go through. Later this week, I'm going to be meeting with the Men and Upton Regional School District, Superintendent, as well as the Men and Town Administrator, to talk about the school district's capital needs and discuss FY26 capital and operating and operating budgets, and also just to talk about other topics of mutual concern. Just a very quick update on Police Chief Search. Candidates have been sent to an assessment center that's going to be scheduled for Friday, December 13th. Following that, the screening committee will need one more time to review the results. And then the next step after that is to present a candidate for the board to confirm appointment.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Just going back to the MURS, do you think? Can you just connect with them? We may, may or may not come up, and we don't necessarily need to draw the ball here, but just, I'm just thinking in terms of there were lots of conversations around fields and.
That's one of the.
I know that's one of the, that's one of the topics of mutual concern and mutual collaboration. Just want to get ahead of that if we know something is coming in the spring or the fall or all that, I think you know that, but.
Yeah.
Definitely something that will ask us about at some.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure thing. So Town Meeting is, especially Town Meeting is right behind us, so it's dealing with a lot of executing contracts with electronic voting, professional services to enhance, do street scape and landscaping for the tip project, also making sure that we submit the paperwork to finalize the donation of the TRASK funds, and also signing contracts with the state to get the great communities awards that we, uh, Streetbike Conversion Project. Also, town staff is working with the development team for Governor's Landing to prepare a development agreement for the board to consider. We're shooting for the board's December 17th meeting, but this basically is doing, as you may recall, when we received the, when we applied for the grant funds for Mass Works. There was a commitment letter that identified a monetary, and then basically if there was an over certain amount that the developer would put forward to the project. That besides that sort of commitment letter, we're looking, and they're looking for basically stronger agreement that captures each other's commitments and make sure that both are protected. For the town especially, for example, if they happen to sell the development or not complete, that contribution, the state is relying on that contribution for the project. So an example is having them provide that money upfront, drawn down in equal amounts as the project goes through construction. This is sort of typical things for development agreement. It's not overly complex because this is all around funding for the infrastructure. And it's only for Governor's Landing. If any other development or even a modification comes forward, that development agreement would have to be modified. So we've been working with Town Council and the engineer to finalize some specifications. We're meeting next week to go over a draft, and then after that, I'll be providing the board with an update, and hopefully we'll have something for the board to review on the 17th. Yeah.
Just on the safe side, can you require that they supply a bond just in case they want to sell?
That's part of the financial contribution that we're going to be discussing. They're basically proposing it as a tri-party agreement, funding the full amount upfront, so that the cash would be in the bank, and that could only be withdrawn with our approval. So it's always easier to have the cash upfront as long as it's secured appropriately, rather than them saying, well, we commit to those funds. This was, so this is all something that we're trying to make sure that we just nail down those mechanisms. Associated with that project, the engineers and also working with MassDOT, we are looking at advertising, putting in project out to bid mid-December. Bits would be due back the end of January. We are coordinating a project with the state, with the Culver Project at Milford and Prospect. And we are looking at basically bidding it out as hopefully one part, but we're going to have an alternate that then basically divides it in two. Because of, of concern that if the grant funds don't do the full project, the state is looking at additional funds that we can bring towards the project. So these are all things that when we come for the development agreement, and Dennis is here, we can talk more about how that's going to work. But I wanted to give the board an update on that. Also, in two weeks, the building, the Building Committee for the Upton Community Center is scheduling their final meeting. They have some small requests that they're going to be considered, considering including replacing two of the toilets in the women's bathroom at the senior center. They're looking at getting ones that are ADA compliant. Right now, the handicap is, but the two sort of regular access stalls, they're looking at actually getting handicap toilets for those rather than using bars and lifts, so that here we can try to get that done. And then they'll be approving their final annual report and then voting to dissolve the building committee. The issue came up that rather than having everyone wait for a handicap stall just because of it being just more accessible, just more user-friendly. That's why they're going ahead and just replacing two of the toilets with ones that are higher to just suit the needs of residents a little bit more. No changes are needed in the men's bathroom. DPW, the consulting engineer has submitted design plans for Grove Street Bridge to MassDOT. Their approval is required for submitting for the construction grant. That grant round is now open and closes February 3rd. Weston Sampson are committed to making sure that everything is ends for that grant project. Lots of stuff is going on.
Get a copy of those plans.
Yes. Lots of stuff that's going on at the senior center. Senior tax work off season just started, and people that are interested are encouraged to apply, contact the ESS Department. A new Friends of Upton Seniors has started and is working on bylaws and getting 501(c)(3) status. The group's primary purpose will be to fundraise to support senior center activities. This past month of November, more than 30 families were served by the Upton Community Center Food Pantry in November. And Food Pantry is receiving a lot of donations, and staff would like to thank everyone for their donations. Also, looking back at the first quarter of 2025 compared to 2024, the number of trips that the senior center provides doubled. It went from 249, these are round trips, from July through September of 2023, to 514 for this past July, August, and September. So lots of, lots of use for our fan. Recreation is revising their and amending their website to reflect the upcoming 2025 programs and also advertisement for hiring of employees for the beach as well as kids at play. Along with sort of starting off the senior tax work off program, we're completing last year's, last fiscal year's, your tax work off process. Payroll has been processed, and now the assessors are working to make sure that the value of the volunteer hours under that program are reflected on their third and fourth quarter tax bills. The Land Use Inspection Department is assisting the Town Manager's Office conduct inspections associated with board's annual license process. The Economic Development Committee is working with BEC to evaluate possible development scenarios for Upton Center and looking at the reuse of the Holy Angels Church. The Lewis Director is also working with the Town Clerk to finalize the submission of paperwork for certifying Upton as MBTA, MBTA community, and the planning and conservation are both reviewing expansion of the parking lot for Mass General Brigham Community Physicians, which is located at 236 Milford Street. We continue to have a number of employment opportunities. We are currently seeking two firefighter paramedics, per diem paramedics, a DPW laborer, a DPW department specialist, a DPW water and wastewater operator, assistant planner, and a part-time van driver. And upcoming events this Friday is my monthly coffee with the Town Manager at the Community Center. On Sunday, December 8th, is Pancakes with Santa. That's from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Upton Fire Station. And on Friday, December 13th, the Men's Club is sponsoring their monthly senior dinner, and it's going to be catered by the Rose Garden that will be on Friday, December 13th.
Thank you. Wow. So it's 6:28. I don't know if we have any public input. I don't see anybody online. I know why you two are here. I would like to take this time to state that, you know, the girls' soccer team are state champions, and I'd like to see the board recognize that some way or form. I don't know what everyone thinks we should do, but. A proclamation, a certificate, something, bring them in, congratulate them. It doesn't, my understanding is it's been 10 years, and women's soccer's not been around all that long. As somebody who grew up with being very excited with Title IX past.
It was an awesome game. It played great.
Wonderful.
Close game. It's tied to like 12 minutes in the second half left, and then they scored. It's awesome.
Wow.
Everybody had such a nice time, and.
It's good.
Lot of support from the community. It was great to see so many people there.
So if the board would like, we can definitely prepare proclamation, reach out to them, see if people would like to come, and then we can have a little recognition for them at our next meeting.
That would be great.
Yeah.
We get it very responsible, do it at the big hall.
Fun, yeah.
That'd be fun. All right.
You deserve it.
That's good. Onto the next. Oh, it just turned 6:30, tax classification hearing. We are just.
Adam Chair.
I think, I think I've got it down to a science now. Good evening, Valerie. How are you?
Evening.
Nice to see you.
See you, Chair. Here is our tax specification hearing presentation.
Sorry, I think we have to open the public hearing. Okay. Let me see. The current tab. And we'll leave the notice, I believe. Town of Upton Tax Classification Hearing Legal Notice. The Upton Select Board will hold a public hearing on FY2025 Property Tax Classification with the Upton Board of Assessors on December 3rd, 2024, at 6:30 PM. This public hearing provides an opportunity for taxpayers to express their views and ask questions about whether the town should adopt different rates for the various classes of property. Taxpayers are welcome to participate and present their views either orally or in writing. Written requests must be received by the Assessor's Office no later than December 2nd, 2024, at 4:00 PM. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should call or sign into the remote meeting. Upton has four classes of property, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. Currently, there is one tax rate for all classes. The assessors are planning to recommend maintaining a single rate for all four classes of property. If you have any questions, please contact the Assessor's Office at 508-529-1002. And that was posted on 11/29/24.
I move that the board vote to open the FY25 Tax Classification Public Hearing.
Is it a roll call vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? There you have the floor.
So having our hearing again because we have to do it in the proper order, and now we're in the proper order. And my apologies for this. So our first, our first page, our first slide is about our interim tax share. Our value assessment date is January 1st, 2024, for fiscal year 2025. All values are analyzed by reviewing residential sales from calendar year 2023 for the residential values. Commercial and industrial values are based on written returns of information based on their income and expense reports, and personal property values are based on cost tables and also use of written information on business assets, the form of lists. All of this is from calendar year 2023, the fiscal year 2025. The next page is our town line value change. When it was discovered that we were not in the proper sequences of signatures, a typo was found, and the typo was on our parcel count. It did not affect the values for each property class nor the total value. This is the same value as our first presentation. It changed our total parcel count. Our total parcels were 3368 in fiscal year 2024, and it's 3,379 fiscal year 2025. It's an increase of 11 parcels total. And I needed to note that, that it is a significant mutation. The next page is the same as our first presentation. It's our current, it was this previous six years, and this six-year look back is, is good because it shows our consistency from our certification to our current year, and that, that's a good. The next three pages are what I presented to you after the meeting was when I mentioned it during the last tax classification hearing meeting. And instead, I wanted to include it in the packet. This is our approved LA4 comparison report, and it has the proper parcel total on there. And the last page of it, page three of it, on the fourth column over, fiscal year 2025 assessed value, it's the same as our chart, because this is where I get the advantage. So it's $1,937,785,059 is the total value of all the real estate in Upton. And that, this is a good comparison report from the prior year. The next pages are new. The next pages I would like to include from here going forward because of part of our tax policy options. The Select Board must decide the percentages of the tax levy that each class of real property, personal property will be. To do so, a residential factor is adopted. The residential factor governs the percentage of the tax levy to be paid by Class 1 residential and Class 2 open space. The difference is shifted to Class 3 commercial and Class 4 industrial and personal properties. Upton historically has voted residential factor of one, a single tax rate, and that's what the Board of Assessors is also recommending. This, these tax policy option pages spell out what would happen if we did adopt them. And after I created this presentation, I thought if there were any questions about it, I did have, I didn't include in this packet, but I do have, you know, a little at the door, an example from Division of Local Services. It's their Data Analytics and Resource Bureau, and it's like a tax calculator that's on our Upton website. It, you plug in, you put in your town, and it gives you all the information if you were going to vote it in. And this is based on fiscal year 2024's information. So this is a good tool to show why it wouldn't benefit Upton to, to do this because it, we don't have a lot of small business, and it could hurt our small business for coming in. Just one question. What's the percentage of commercial and industrial? So we have 174, it's 1.7% commercial industrial. And that, yeah, 1.74, almost 2%. So I included all the information from the Division of Local Services about the tax policy options. And the small commercial exemption options, which we don't really have enough small, all of our businesses are mostly small commercial, so we don't have enough. On that, on the small commercial and the residential exemption, I had another part I had completed before I came up here, and it was about, again, it's from Division of Local Services, and it's their data, data analytics, and it's all 352 cities and towns, and which ones have adopted the residential exemption in what percentage, and the small commercial exemption in what percentage. Of all 352 cities and towns, 19 adopted the residential exemption percentage, and 14 adopted the small commercial exemption percentage. Of that, only two Worcester County towns adopted the small commercial exemption percentage. No Worcester County towns adopted the residential exemption percentage. The majority of the towns that do adopt them are, are cities and towns, rather, are cities that adopted the small commercial exemption, and Cape Cod towns mostly that adopted the residential exemption percentage. And I thought that that was a good tool to look at, to see who did it and, and how much that they voted in, and to see that statistically across the state, it's at the Cape or it's Boston, that it's not in Worcester County. So that was a good information to, to review and look at. So back to our tax specification part. So the Board of Assessors recommends residential factor of one. We also recommend not to adopt a residential exemption and not to adopt a small commercial exemption because of our statistics of less than 2% commercial properties townwide. And the part that the Select Board votes on is to establish the residential factor, to adopt or not adopt a residential exemption, and to adopt or not adopt a small commercial exemption. And that's the presentation.
Thank you.
Just on the residential exemption, right? So that's just a way of shifting taxes to presumably higher asset, property owners, right? So people that own properties. I would assume a part of that process, because it's not included here, right? Like, if we voted to support this, then there would have to be some process to figure out what the difference is, or is that sort of predetermined what, what the two different rates would be for, like, in all the impacts?
So there is.
Like, how many people would be, like, how many properties are impacted, and how much would their taxes go up by, and how much would the taxes go down by for the people that are primary residents?
So we do have that based on fiscal year 2024's food values and tax rate. They do have an example of that with the, with the examples of the calculations on there, and where we only have 11 new parcels from the prior year. This is going to give a fairly good idea of what it is, and yes, they do have that. So it does have the impact on it, the tax bill without the exception, the tax bill with the exemption, and the change in the tax bill. And this is based on our, it shows our median sale price from fiscal year 2024, and the median would, the sale price wouldn't be affected. The ones greater than that would, the ones less than that would get a reduction. So I did want to give this to the board, everyone have their own copy, because this answers that question about it. And yeah, it does. It would. Our median is 683, that would have no impact. As soon as you went to 790, the bill will go up $131.30. So these do, for $1,390,000 value property, we don't have any residential properties in town yet, fiscal year 2025 yet, but we will for fiscal year 2026, as we had a sale, oh, 2024, that was $1,450,000. That bill will go up $869.30.
And did the board, did you all look at this, or did the Board of Assessors look at this, or did just you look at that?
So Val and I.
Built it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Certainly don't think it's anything we would change this year, but just learning more about it for future year, for future considerations presumably is something that.
Especially if.
Right.
Some of the older properties, which presumably.
Like, we're constantly talking about the strain on longtime residents that have lived in their homes and aged in their homes and don't have a mortgage, and their only expenses are their taxes, and.
Which are now much more than mortgage.
Benefit those people. And so I think that certainly we did a lot, we've done a lot with the senior tax work off, and we've done a lot with various things. This is, just seems like it may be another tool in the toolbox to help a certain folks in town. Well, exactly.
Right.
Exactly. But it, but I think, and that's what I'm sort of.
I think you're right. I think, I think, like, honestly, I think people that have been in their homes long, they may or may not have a lower worth of their house. So therefore, it would benefit them because they may or may not be up kept. They definitely didn't pay one and a half million when they bought it. They probably paid, you know, my mother loves to tell me she paid $15,000 for it. It's a three-story Victorian built by Norton. It's great. But yeah, so people like that who, you know, it is what it is. But yeah, so people like that who, you know, it is what it is.
Or one of the challenges is because this is age agnostic, this is solely on property value. They could be land rich, house poor.
Yeah.
And they could end up continuing to pay more because it's the value of the assessed property, not.
Like the exemption is a principal residence or not. So that's sort of when the exemption kicks in and then.
But like me, I have thirty acres and ranch house. No, I had the ranch house on a. Quarter acre or a three quarters of an acre, it'd be a big difference in value.
Right.
And I, but I would have to pay more because it's based on the property value in its entirety.
But why would you pay more if you're, I think if we, I think the only people that would pay more are the people that aren't primary residents.
No, it's based on the assessed value.
Residential exemption, select board can grant a residential exception to all class one residential properties that are the principal residents of the taxpayer.
But the land that goes with it is part of the assessment, it's based on the assessment.
Correct.
Says it's based on.
So it's a total, yes. So it would harm large landowners.
If we had a lot of like, and that's why this happens on the Cape. You have a lot of second homes where the Cape house is not a principal residence. It's a second home, so they may be living in Belmont. So here, majority of our properties are principal.
I.
And what if properties owned by people live in homes? It's an exemption that's applied to the whole property, not to the residence. Not sure what you're.
I don't get it.
You can have a hundred acres with a, a small cape on it. But you're gonna get assessed on the entire hundred acres with.
I'm, 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 I'm not even getting to the assessed value part of the decision tree. I'm up above that too. I feel like this says you can grant an exemption. To properties that are the principal residents of the taxpayer.
Yes.
So what are you exempting them from?
Taxes.
Yes, based on value.
Right.
Exempted from tax and.
But, but only if you're, it's your primary residence.
Which basically taught us, it isn't up to virtually all properties that are owned by a resident.
But isn't this rental property? So I, I, my, my read of this, and again, I appreciate the time.
Shifts the tax to rental properties, which is why it's very popular.
Right, it shifts, it shifts the tax to renters. So then how does that affect people that are in a principal residence? Like I would think that the people who are paying in their principal residence would only go down. If it's their primary residence, because you're increasing the taxes and shifting the burden to people that are on rental properties, basically.
That's. So there's, there's actually two shifts. There are shifts between low value and light, high value homes. And then there are shifts from all homes, principal residences to not basically. You know.
Yeah, so, so it really should be called. It, the exemption really is shifting taxes to. People who own rental property or have properties above the mean value. Yes, thank you, that's.
State of residence, multi family. That's an analysis.
Yeah.
I see, it, 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 Upton were really, you know, if I hadn't been talking about the same thing. I mean, there are some exceptions and, and we were to consider this, you'd want to understand how it works.
Right, exactly. No, that, that make, that's what I wasn't understanding because I was just reading the principal residence part and thinking, oh, it's just people who have rental properties that would be impacted. But it's both rental properties and hot people above the mean on owner, median home value would go up as well. All right, that, that, that seems less appealing because to your point. That then affects legacy families or people that have been in Upton that have large tracts of land and live in them. And then they're paying sort of an extra penalty too. And they could be that same person that's lived in their home for five generations and owned all this land. And doesn't have a mortgage and we'd be raising their taxes, which is not, it's the opposite. So we'd have to be very careful about that. Okay.
That's why I built.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. It's really the Cape and Boston.
Yes, cities.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The tax specification hearing presentation. So.
I'm ready. I move that the board vote to close the fiscal year twenty five task, tax classification public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty, section fifty six, to establish a single tax rate for all types of property in fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move that the board vote to not adopt the residential exemption for fiscal year twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move that the board vote to not adopt the small commercial exemption for fiscal year twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming again.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Now on to billing.
Never dull.
Good night.
Thanks, have a great night. Next, our license approvals. And license renewals. Does anybody have any questions?
Have any of these, they know that they're all up to date on taxes and all that?
It's from here and their inspections. There's also, we can't, the licenses handed out after. Correct. There is one that is highlighted, I need for you on there. One did come up highlighted. The common vic, there's a common vic one that I haven't received back and that's family.
Okay.
So I just want to, you know, it's on that one. But other than that, I mean, we still ask that you approve them with these, that carries them, that they won't be.
They'll get updated.
Well, we have to, you have to approve. But the issuance just come, they're, they're held until if somebody, especially the alcohol. You would be notified because you have a license in place for all, for the alcohol. And if I can't re, if it's not renewed, then they have to go through a process.
Okay. Very good.
It's just been a past practice that the board has. In the other towns that I've worked at, that the board has approved them pending, you know, with these motions. It carries, we can't release them, must say that.
Right, the successful inspections and outstanding payments and all that. I think that's the easiest way to do it because it sort of places the onus on the process as opposed to us arbitrarily deciding.
We gotta hold a board meeting again tonight because somebody just paid, you know, it's, it's, it's hairy carry towards the end. Because especially the liquor licenses, they can't run, they literally as of December thirty first. They have to have everything done. They really have to.
And it puts the onus on them and on us.
If you're comfortable with that, I just ask that you make those motions and, well, do I go out?
Okay, I'm sure. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote to approve the liquor license renewal applications as listed contingent on successful inspections and outstanding payments to the town. And to sign the twenty twenty five A B C C renewal certification form and license renewal forms.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move that the board vote to approve the class two license renewal applications as listed contingent on successful inspections and outstanding payments to the town.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Moved at the board vote to approve the common visual license renewal applications as listed contingent on successful inspections and outstanding payments to the town.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Moved at the board vote to approve the entertainment license renewal applications as listed contingent on successful inspections and outstanding payments to the town.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. So next is our select board discussion and action. So we need to vote because we literally just finished special town meeting. It's now time to vote to open annual town meeting warrant.
I'm.
On Wednesday, December fourth, twenty twenty four, do I hear a motion?
I move that the select board vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty nine, section ten and Town Code, Chapter one hundred, to open the warrant for the Thursday, May first, twenty twenty five, annual town meeting on Wednesday, December fourth. Twenty twenty four and to close said warrants on Friday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at noon. Said annual town meeting to be held at Nittmuck Regional High School, ninety Pleasant Street, Upton, Mass, oh, one, five, six, eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And next is ARPA funds reallocation.
I had emailed it out to the board, but we do it here. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, uh, coming into the end of calendar year twenty twenty four. There are requirements on what towns are needed to do to use their ARPA allocation. And or if they haven't been spent to lock up those funds. And one specifically is having an executed contract to lock up. The allocation of those funds. The board, starting back, she's, yeah, it's coming in two years ago. When we went before town meeting with the plan for funding Grove Street Bridge. We identified we want to use five hundred seventy five thousand dollars of ARPA funds and any remaining funds. To go towards the construction of Street Bridge. That in addition to when, to me, I recall board discussed with Dennis applying for a five hundred thousand construction grant. It's mentioned in the town manuals. As, as Dennis had provided as an update. A year ago, we ran into issues where additional environmental permitting was needed and that delayed the project. While we had hoped to be out to construction, realistically, that project is not going to be bid out until. Therefore, we cannot enter into a contract with anyone at this time. So we need to figure out what we can do with what is nearly a million dollars of unallocated ARPA funds. Because we can't enter into a contract with. For Grove Street Bridge. So Bill has been doing a lot of work. Bill, Dennis, Kenny and I have been talking for the last number of weeks. On getting final accounting for the various allocations and then identifying a plan for using those funds. And what we identified was that other roadway projects such as paving projects we've recently completed, painting and other projects. Are all eligible for being paid through ARPA. They are articles that were also approved by town meeting. And what we'd be able to do is basically. Pay for that work and this is on the backside, your, your memo. Pay for that work. And when we go back to town meeting in May, we basically say. Three hundred thousand that was allocated in F Y twenty three for roadway paving purposes. We're gonna amend that to then be used for Grove Street Bridge. Same thing with the painting of the pristine building. Just sort of like what, what we just did at special town meeting with the fire station. So by amending those, that almost nine million, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. We can then reallocate at town meeting to go towards Grove Street Bridge, which was our intent. This is just making sure that we maximize those ARPA funds. So on the back sheet, the recommend, recommended reallocation of funds. I'd be looking for the board to approve the reallocation funds as proposed on that back sheet. That will give us one more opportunity at the December seventeenth. If we need to make any minor corrections such as miscellaneous roadway. Item, if we have to make any corrections like within there, because some is for to this detail. And it gets a little messy because if we have to list out ten projects, we're going to work with Kenny. In order to make sure that this is all cleaned up. And so if we need to make a correction on December seventeenth, we'll have plenty of time to do that. This does include, and you can see prior ARPA allocation accounting. You see what we allocated, what we voted to allocate, what we expended, the remaining funds. And we do have the electronic voting on, on there because the board did vote to allocate ARPA for that. And we do have a contract now with them, they're working at, yes.
So that's. That was going to be my question. So is that part of the recommended reallocation of funds or like what of, what of these?
That's already, so if on the bottom, the total that we're looking to reallocate is eight nine two six five seven. So we're already accounting for the board approving ARPA funds for the electronic voting. And we're looking at for that eight ninety two amount to reallocate for pristine painting, paving of Pleasant Street, Fowler Street, Men's Street, Pleasant Street. Second part, Pleasant Street, Cass Street, and then miscellaneous roadway.
Right, and then where are we going to get the money for electronic voting?
It's already been deducted from the, the full.
It's part of that nine hundred and thirteen.
Oh, 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 this, this is remaining after these have been paid.
Yes.
Got it.
So the only reason why it's not expended is because we haven't got them a check yet.
But we have the contract, so we're.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
So all of these other things in the prior ARPA allocation accounting remaining column are still planned to be paid from ARPA funds.
So the remaining is, so for example, three hundred dollars, the website ding cost twenty five thousand.
Like two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Fiscav AC pipe. So is, are we, is that happening or not?
That's, we've already closed out the project, that's what's remaining and that's why we need to reallocate. So that remaining column is what gets us the eight hundred ninety two thousand dollars. That then in the, in the table above that is how we want to distribute those remaining funds. So for Fiscav, it came in almost three hundred dollars cheaper than what they voted.
This two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars we're reallocating, right?
The whole column of remaining.
Okay. Which means we're not using it to pay for the AC.
It's already done.
Already done.
The work, these projects have already been completed and they came in under budget.
Right. But except for the media one and the electronic voting.
Right, and that's, so that's where the remaining is this ninety three, then this.
Oh, I, this, this row is not labeled, okay. So this is like a subtotal, then you're subtracting this. Okay, so this is a subtotal. This nine thirteen is a subtotal, then you're taking out electron, oh, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, format, I'm like, what am I looking at? Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Making people with accounting backgrounds nuts, aren't we?
I've looked at a lot of financial statements, I don't know what this means. Okay.
Oh, my God.
Good.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Oh, wait a minute, okay. I, uh, move that the board vote to approve the reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds as presented.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
I know you're doing a little thing, you don't have time to do everything in formal financial accounting formatting, so no worries.
So, and distribution of select board policies, that must be these lovely red books we have in front of us.
I think we'll need a little time to this stuff.
So, and, and that's where we put this on, one, to, to, to. Give you these, these paperweights.
Sorry.
I, I personally going through some, like things like this, find it much easier having a hard copy. We can thumb through, we can divide, we can then. We can thumb through, we can divide, we can then set aside anything that's, uh, approved or amended. The idea is to get, you know, even for the board to take a look, look at what's there, and then we can decide, how do we wanna structure this review? Um, yeah, example, maybe, hey, every meeting, let's have a policy workshop, and we're gonna review five. Or you thumb through and say, look, this looks pretty easy, um, straightforward. Maybe here are things that you grade as more difficult or challenging that we need to, and we sort things out. If you wanna have more of a devoted hour-long workshop just to go through and have a discussion, really looking for feedback on, from the board on what, how you'd like to structure this. Um, uh, and if, if it's easier to get a good idea of looking at it first and then developing that, that plan for attacking it, we can put it on for the seventeenth.
I'd like to at least take a look at it, cuz.
I would. I wanna take, well, stop.
Yeah. In our spare time. And then we'll, we'll bring it up again on the seventeenth, because it is extensive.
We could have now a workshop before each meeting and so.
Are there particular policies that you think are in need of attention?
That would, that would be good to know that.
Yeah.
I mean, like, why is this, like, why is this even coming up?
It's better to have them flagged, is that what you're saying?
So.
Yes.
Like, why is this come up? Why are these sitting on our desk? To review the policies on an annual basis. The board has a policy to review the policies on, so maybe we should review that policy.
Maybe that's the one we need to flag. Exactly.
Okay, so check that one off.
Let's check that one off. Yeah, and, and honestly, Joe, since, you know, you and Sue are the ones that really live this, live and breathe it.
I mean.
If, if there's issues where something's not working or something's very outdated, because.
Yes.
I don't like how every previous board has reviewed this on an annual basis.
No, no. I've been here for seven years, so.
Six.
I've accounted for seven of those, and we've, like, we don't.
We have to. So, so, but if there's, you know, honestly, we, we're, I'm sure you guys know this better than we do. And if you go through and say, hey, you know what, th- this one was passed in the fifties that, God knows what it is, you know? And it's totally irrelevant.
Exactly.
Um, something.
Right. Thankfully, most of them are basically from two thousand and twelve. Yeah, pretty good. That's what I was gonna say, like, yeah, like, if it's, like, if something gets in the, right, like, to me, I'm just gonna say something you're saying, so I don't even need to say.
Right.
It's like, something's getting in, if something's getting in your way, getting in taxpayer, getting in the taxpayers' way, or getting in businesses' way, or getting in residents' way.
Right.
Or getting in a department's way, or anyone's way, that's what we wanna be able to address.
For example, if there's, if.
Feel compelled to.
There's something in here that the people need to be present and physically sign, now that there is such a thing as electronic signature. We can update something like that. Let's just bring it up to two thousand and twenty-five standards. Bill?
Yes, to the chair.
Yes.
So I, I was looking at that earlier today, and my first, uh, go through was which ones affect the DPW.
Right.
Right, so I think, you know, one thing you could do was ask the departments to review those policies. And I guess to your statement, you know, what, what of them get in way? Or what of them are really, you know, relevant, or really should be changed to handle how we practice?
Exactly.
Exactly.
By the people that live and experience them every day, right? There's people who's worked this affects, so.
Because we've all been somewhere and looked around and thought, yeah, the engineer never stepped foot in this type of a building.
Yes.
And that's what I don't want us to do with the policies. Great idea, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing to, to the board's knowledge is they are also online, I believe, except, like, if, if you wanna thumb through them as well.
I'm a paper person. Give me a book, give me a newspaper, give me paper.
Sunday coffee reading.
I don't, I honestly don't know what I'm gonna do when they finally did, make it all disappear. I'll be stressing. Um, okay, so we'll bring it up again on the seventeenth there.
Yeah.
And we'll work on maybe asking the department heads to the different, various departments to take a look.
And there, there are some that are gonna be, um, more specific, like the, the ambulance. We may wanna, as part of the workshop, bring in police, fire, and concentrate on some of those, those policies that deal with that, our DPW. So we can also look at, um, how we can group those, because there, there's also a good number of financial policies that we'd, uh, wanna make sure from, from Kenny Costa that, okay, are these relevant? And have there been changes, either internal processes or state law, that has made changes to some of the financial processes?
Exactly. Okay. So moving on, we're on to the, um, scholarship policy. Um, did everyone review it or? Do you have any thoughts? I know in working with Sue and Joe, they had said, what do you wanna do? And I've changed the deadline for applications. I suggested May twenty-fifth, which is prior to their, um, April vacation. Um, they should be able to get it done before, especially because it needs a guidance counselor's signature. So if they're doing it over April vacation, they are not getting the signature. Then we would make a decision by the beginning of April, which would allow us to be presented at the annual awards nights and be included in the flyer, the, you know, the graduation recognition, which we should get, and the people should get.
What was the date of May?
May twenty.
March.
March. Did I say May? Probably. Okay. See, now it's getting, it's getting late. Laura hasn't had dinner yet, so brain's starting to fritz. Um, so yes, March. We decided March, because like I said, and everything else pertains. The only, and, and then the only other question or comment I had is the applicability. Um. We, somewhere, you know, when Mr. Fleming presented the Gary Bates Scholarship, um, it did say to someone further in their education or going into a trade, and we should make that clear that, you know, if you're going to work as a plumber or a carpenter, and you need tools, you can apply and explain that I'm going into a trade, you know, I may be going into a union. Um, but my understanding of the handwritten document we all saw, that would be covered as well. So maybe we should make that a little clearer.
There's a policy that goes with these scholarships.
Easy.
Yes, it's on page, um, thirty-four or forty-seven. Well, that, that, the annual scholarship policy, it, it also gives preference to people going into municipal or public service identified as a field which benefits or potentially benefits a state, city, or town, and their salary usually falls under the respective budget or tax base. I would think somebody, public service to me would be police officers, fire, EMT. Um, I would put nurses and medical under that.
Those would be emergency, those in public, as public safety, if you still have staff, but.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we've ever, when we look at the applications, I think last year was the first time in a long time we had a plethora of applications. So, but maybe when we're going through, we need to. Yeah. Get a little bit more attention and, but I think if we get them out earlier and get them in earlier, we'll have a better shot at everything. Any other comments?
None here?
Okay.
Sounds great.
Have we, if we're gonna stick with the five hundred or do everything, so I don't know.
I know. Um. All right. We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to cut back. We'd have to, instead of, I think we give out, do we give out six, five hundred? I'm doing that from memory. Um, you know, do we do three one thousands? Because unfortunately, five hundred does not even buy one book, since I've seen my son's book list. Can't you find it on Amazon? I said, he goes, no, you can't, mom.
So.
Sure.
The, the five hundred dollar scholarships coming from Restine or the welfare, um, that's where the board has, I think, a little bit more flexibility to change that amount. Bates is, we'd have to go to town meeting to amend that nineteen seventy-two article. And there's not all that, that much, um, respectively, in the Bates. There's enough.
Right.
For the two hundred dollars on an annual basis, and that will last a very long time, because it's basically earning about two hundred dollars.
Okay.
A year. But if you wanted to increase that amount, we just would have to go to town meeting.
Okay, so, but, but the board could arbitrarily change the amount of the Restine scholarships?
You could, um, here, you just do it by amending the policy. And so that, so this is a way for us to distribute funds through the, using the welfare. So I didn't realize it. So this is a mechanism. We could use the welfare fund for scholarships. Yeah.
We have them. That's where the money comes out of. Am I correct?
Um, it's confidential.
Okay.
When they're. I was gonna say, I'm not in the Restine scholarship. The, the remaining can come out.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a lot of potential, because there's a lot of money in that account. Right? I mean, I don't think we need to rush to give away hundreds of thousands of dollars, but.
No.
We have, there, there's eight hundred thousand dollars in that. So if there's a legal mechanism by which we can distribute that fund, those funds for the purposes of scholarships, then we could very easily consider, even if we increase them to every one of them.
To a thousand.
To a thousand dollars. That doesn't even touch.
If we only do six, that's six thousand dollars.
Right.
Right. Right. And I do think that would help. Excuse me?
Only delta of three.
Right.
That's what I mean, right?
Exactly.
Out of, out of.
Yes.
Seven hundred thousand dollars, I think that would be fantastic.
And I think we may get, yeah, cuz that would, then you get two books.
Yeah. I, I.
You know, which is.
Yeah.
So I'd like to change the dates, and, um, do I need a motion? Or is it a policy that we?
So, I mean, it basically, it's a policy, and the board could, could vote to amend it now, to amend the, the policy, um, to reflect, um, uh, award, uh, be six one thousand dollar scholarships to be funded by, you can just, these folks change that amount. Right. You just change the amount, same sources, we just shift. This, right. This does not establish the deadline. That's really administrative in the letter, in the draft letter that's there.
Okay.
So that's gonna change the, the due date, um, but.
The board to be able to review these, so could applications and do the twenty-fifth, you want the board to review first meeting in April? That's not a lot. Oh, yeah, if they do.
Yeah, if they, they're all, if they all get in by the twenty-fifth, they can come out to us, and that gives us just about a week to review them for the first meeting in April.
It's plenty, as long as we know, as long as we know.
And then you wanna award them by what the fall next, the next.
We'll, we'll vote now. We'll review them and vote that.
Oh, that, that would be.
First meeting.
Yeah.
That would give me.
That's what we do, yeah.
We can also, yes, cuz we'll sort of, we'll, we basically read through them all ahead of time and sort of have our prioritization. And then we sort of, we should come up with a easier, better system to do it, right? Like, sort of anonymize them, so that we're talking about. No, after, because in the past, we didn't even have enough. Yeah.
Right.
The eight. That's what I mean, exactly. So.
I think last year, we, we kind of numbered them.
Yeah, exactly. Well, what Sue and I will do is when we, when we receive them, we'll basically identify a letter or number that we can then use to track, because we basically did that during the meeting. That's what, that's what we did, exactly. We'll cut that off. Yeah. And we'll take care of that when we distribute the packet, so that everyone can then have the same. Like, sort of reference table of.
Perfect.
Right, having a discussion, prioritizing, and debating without having to talk about names.
Exactly, cuz I think we, yeah, we alphabetized and then numbered them, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were scrambling a little bit, but we got through it.
A lot of paper shuffling at that meeting.
We were.
We did it, though. We did it. We got through it.
We did it. We're like, who's this?
You wanna make that motion?
Oh, yes, definitely. Um, let's try this on for size.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the change to the scholarship policy timeline as noted, and that we increase the scholarships, uh, to be six one thousand dollar scholarships funded according to the policy.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, that was easier than we thought. Um, discussion of the community message board.
So just wanted to sort of bring this back up after, uh, town meeting. So, um, uh, one of the things that I had, uh, followed up with, um, uh, someone who spoke at town meeting was that, you know, what's, what are some of the, the issues that maybe spoke about? Besides, besides cost. Um, and, uh, you know, one of the, one of the concerns was as far as glare within the, the center, would it, would it look historic? Um, and we had a sort of a back and forth, and I was pointing to the, the one that was recently, or a year and a half ago, installed in, in the center of Whiteville as an example, that the select board would really define what gets displayed. And that realistically, black with white lettering, something that we're controlled, can pull at night, the illumination, the lumens, um, we're not looking at what BBT does with their sign.
So.
Um, we're, we're looking at, this is really to facilitate providing the text in, um, in a more straightforward way. I know that there had been discussion and even, uh, uh, other people had commented, like, is that the, the right location? Um, uh, with the roundabout coming in, you know, should we look at another location? And we can absolutely do that, and that's where getting some thoughts from the board on, is it, uh, do you think it would be better at the, for the little comment on Restine? In a different location, people commented, well, maybe we should add it by the community center. That's where the right of way is actually so wide, um, it pushes it quite a bit back, um, that we may have to secure an easement from the BFW, uh, because we can't really fit it on that side. So wanna get a thought, some of your thoughts, in case you talk to other people as far as what some of the issues were. And realistically, um, uh, while my thought was going to the men's club with town meeting approval, if men's club went up and down as far as, well, we can't do that amount, let's come in at ten thousand, be able to do a donation of ten thousand dollars, um, to offset the cost. Um, we wouldn't then having, we wouldn't have a proposal, but then we have this delta. So, you know, perhaps it would have been better to go and submit an application to the men's club to nail them down. So we go to town meeting saying, well, the request is really thirty, um, because the men's club is contributing ten to fifty. Um, I also had Bill, Bill Lindu say, hey, look, I really like the idea, but I'd love to be able to save the town some money by building a structure. Build the whole case around the sign. Um, so he approached me in the, in the lobby downstairs saying, you know, that he liked the idea, but hey, I could maybe save some of the, the town some money if we built something. The question ends up being, cuz the, the one that was fact was metal and would, would last another twenty years, you know? Would a hand-built wooden structure last another twenty years? Um, but that's definitely, you know, something that a resident came forward, saying, hey, I.
He approached me at the end of town meeting and said, Laura, you know, I've done a lot of woodworking for the town, and I'd love to do that. You would just need to purchase the electronics, and we could figure out how to get it done. Um, I did find it humorous that after it voted down, I think we spent at least twenty minutes listening to people say, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. How was I supposed to know that? Um, I think with something that's digitized, you know, to me, it, it, you could, if you're coming into town hall, the town hall parking lot, where it is now, you could walk over and take a look at it. I don't really think people read it when they drive by. I don't know. I mean, I come out of Grove Street, I never take a look at it. Um, I see it when I come up, um, North Main, and I look to the right. Um, I don't know, what does everyone think? Do you think we should move it? I know there's been a question with roundabout, how much room we're gonna have?
My. Communicating messages to the public requires multiple locations, multiple venues, right? So for me, like, I don't place.
Place too much weight on where we can put it cuz there's not gonna be any one perfect place where it's like. That's the spot. We did it. Now that now everybody knows what's going on.
Exactly.
Like, frankly, moving it, you might lose people because they're gonna be like, where the heck's the sign? And then you're gonna be, so.
Right.
I think it's okay where it is. I think. Replacing what's there with something that is automated, but to your point, it's like essentially, I mean. And the way I think of it is from a historical perspective is we can make it what's there now, literally look like that digital white with. Black with white lettering or white with black lettering and you change the black lettering and you light it up. And it's on and then at night at nine o'clock, it turns off like so it it.
Exactly.
It's it doesn't, it's like, we're not talking Vegas signs, we're not talking the BBT colors flashing fireworks, like. I'm definitely not a fan of any of that, but I am a fan of an automated version of changing out what's out there now.
Yes, because it's very labor intensive and I know.
Yeah, that's what.
Somebody somebody complained to me about it one day and I said. If you would like to go into the town.
Said the same.
Enjoy yourself.
Or snowing or thirteen degrees.
Yeah, you wanna rotate the messaging, you go right ahead.
But do you know, nobody has ever taken.
We accept volunteers, we accept volunteers.
What was the other price if we didn't go with the full blown?
Um, so that was about twelve thousand dollars less because they do have to, they would be refurbishing the existing structure. There's rust, there's some separation of some of the materials, so they would refurbish it, they would um paint it. So there is some work, but the delta ends up being twelve thousand dollars. Um, the panel. The panels, just like your TVs come and set sizes, so they would have to build something around to then sort of fit onto it versus. A structure that then is sized appropriately just to fit the panel. So that ends up being the difference. Um. Not a significant saving, so that's where um. What was what was put forward was the full replacement and then if we wanted to, if also, and we thought, well, people really love. The blue one out there and let's refurbish it, we at least have the authorization. But. If the idea is that if we wanna bring this forward, like really being specific, this is exactly what it. What it would be, here's the cost, men's blood as a commitment. Um. Uh, uh, here's a draft policy, select board is in charge of it come nine thirty at night. It turns off.
What about the happy trust? There's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you can use for municipal purposes.
That's the board, the board has other trust funds that do not require going back to town. So we can also look at, we can just sort of narrow down what we think is.
Funding appropriate.
And then just.
I I think honestly, I think that's the way we should go because like you said, Brett. Nobody's gonna agree that it's in the right spot or the wrong spot.
It's a town hall message board, so it's next to the town hall. It's not meant to be the be all and end all community advertisement. It's a town hall message.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Where those yellow things are.
And now you're just teasing me.
A lot of grass, right?
I think it's gonna be grass, I hope someday.
Someday. Yeah, I I think honestly, Joe, I think we should just take it, decide which account to pull the money from.
Yeah.
Pick a design, you know, either it looks just like the one now or it could be a very simple black box.
Work with this, work with this, work and be like, hey, we're gonna redo this sign, we wanna make it awesome, Bill Lindus will build it. Great.
And and find out if that's that's the way to go, if 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 it's. For longevity, if Bill wants to build it and we can find, you know, it's a TV screen you put in and you get the wiring done.
You know, you know, there's this thick polyurethane that you put on.
That's what, yeah.
Put that on, they had a protective for, protective for quite a while.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that that would be my only question is, are we better off with a wooden structure or for? You know, some of the stuff, they now make plastic roofs, you know, because we all know that those little playhouses that we bought for our children will never die. Um, yeah, I mean.
Now it's all vinyl, whatever, whatever.
Exactly.
But but there's something to be said if you can use a nice cedar or ironwood or something, right? There's types of wood that you.
Yep, all right, let's talk to the, so if you can find out what's the easiest way, we'll just take the money and.
Yeah.
Put it where it needs to go.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Next is the town building holiday schedule.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, honestly, Joe has pointed out that. Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve are Tuesday nights and that's when um town hall is usually open till six. Which to me would be cruel. Especially for anyone with little kids or anybody that's hosting or has a family and, you know, when the email went out, I was like. Send them all home at noon, but quite frankly. I, thinking about it. I can't imagine that anybody shows up at town hall for the senior center on Christmas Eve. I mean, could we? Give everybody the day off with pay?
I think I think. I think at at least if we um uh closed at noon, that's, I think that's what traditionally happens also with other towns. DPW actually has it within their contract that they have a half day on Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Um, we do have contract language and police that we would just have to give them equal compensation time, which is not with that. Um, so, you know, it ends up being um, you know, noon or I had also thrown out one o'clock. The reason why I did that is for the community center. Meals on Wheels still um operates and they're basically cleaning up and you have some of the people that are eating. Yeah, they can let themselves out. Um, but if if staff needs to oversee, then at least we're making sure that they're on their way out before.
I I would prefer no time, you know, I think I think the meals on wheels are out and about by then. You know.
They're usually out twelve thirty to one.
Okay.
And just to be clear, like, and I and I know we'll all agree on this, right? Like, we wanna give people the time off as a benefit. I don't wanna take money out of people's pockets and need the money. So how is there a way, like, I sort of, I always take for granted that. People get paid what they get paid, but I guess that's not necessarily true if you're an hourly employee and you. We were, we're being nice and giving, letting you leave at noon, you're losing four hours of pay. Like, is there a way to?
So there.
People, take money away from people and just make it a benefit without.
Yes, so. You tie it to the the hours that are regularly worked. So for example, if if we close town hall because of um. A snow emergency or something. And we're still, we'll still do.
They still put in those hours, hours worth of that.
The other, the other issue is that um. A lot of people end up taking vacation time anyways on those days, so they'd actually be sort of getting some of that back. They went.
Anyway.
Um, and. I haven't, since I've been here, it's always fallen on a again, but in my last town, it didn't. And myself and the town is very telling people, leave.
Right.
We're here, leave because, you know, it's it's like.
Speak with your families.
You vote enough time. You know, even if the one didn't vote for, it's like, I'm telling people to just go anyway.
Right, well, that's what I'm thinking about.
No one is coming in.
Can we just like, like I said, call a snow emergency? You know, hopefully it does not snow cuz I do not like snow. I know the plow drivers hate it when I say that, but I'm sorry. Um, you know, like, one hour Christmas Eve, I wake up to wait and then it disappears. I'm a Scrooge, um, you know, so I, like I said, I wouldn't have a problem um with the the day off. Just like a snowy.
The closing, closing at at noon.
Just just.
Both buildings.
I would just say both buildings, not, they don't have to come in if they don't want to, you know, just.
She's saying the whole.
I'm saying the whole day.
Let's be clear, Joe.
The whole day, Joe.
Did you see I was trying to?
Yeah, you were trying, you tried to bring me back around and we fought you.
If 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 you, if you look at it. I mean, I'm all for giving people days off, but I feel like we need to be a little bit careful with policy.
That I'm worried about.
Like, I don't wanna like start just making up paid holidays.
No.
So we gotta be a little.
Yeah, okay.
That's the only thing I'm a little like, eh, I don't know. Like, I like being jet, believe me, I wanna do it.
Well, I I know that. I know that.
Maybe that people have to look at, maybe that's one of the policies we can look at, is the holiday policy.
Christmas Eve, the whole day off?
Yes. North Bridge for Health is closed that whole week, I believe. Northbridge Senior Center is closed that whole week. Yeah, and and they all do deep cleanings and stuff, so yeah, there's a lot of towns that do just close that whole.
I've been looking at websites where they close it. Apparently.
Um, it it it's it's up to the board, you know?
Our town employees.
I mean, it doesn't, it it doesn't happen all the time, but it is a, it's a royal pain. It, you know, you come in, it it's right in the middle of the week. Yeah.
I I I would, I would, and maybe like more clarity than this, but I would say clearly what the message you're getting unanimously from the board is. We wanna be very generous to our town employees.
So what, because the the board controls. The buildings, we can say that that both are, there are programs, both the library and. The community center, so we would have to cancel and make sure there's not a conflict like a um some sort of. Um, uh. Gathering that's already, an event that's already pre-planned. Um.
There's people, if there's people depending on services that have been set up, like, that's the other thing, like, I don't wanna disrupt. Like. Only if it's better, like, we want it to be good and better. We don't wanna make problems for people.
Right, right, as long as, as long as there's nothing that needs. I I did call, um, I would call Katie for a bingo girl issue and I. I said, do you have anything scheduled for Christmas Eve? And she said, no. And she said, actually, they even canceled bingo the day after Christmas because they thought nobody.
Cuz like, what about like?
But I don't know what the library.
Like, it's not like, cuz this is just town hall, we're just talking about the people that work in town hall, right? So then.
Town hall and the community center. So that's where DPW in their contract, they already get half a day for Christmas Eve.
Uh, so there's parity with what other departments get.
Uh, for police, it basically says if the this. Ironically, it doesn't give a situation in case the town manager or select board closed town hall, just as. If the select board for town manager closed town hall for half of a day. They get equal comp time, which realistically, we'd be then giving them. Full comp time as we ended up closing the buildings that day.
I mean, police, fire, and unfortunately, the DPW has the last few years, every holiday. You guys are busy. May it not happen.
Look, my god, if that policy does not apply to this.
Okay.
Need to close the trailer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the trailer, the town hall and.
And the seniors.
Like, that's the kind of stuff I'm talking.
Okay, yeah.
You, like, I wanna.
Parody, yes.
Want parody.
Yes, because.
I don't want people feeling left out, like, hey, gee, that must be.
Yeah, exactly.
In a town hall.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
Any more water breaks.
Yeah, no, you know.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm just looking at ESS schedule and, yeah, it's an exercise class and and a card. It's not things that can't be scheduled.
Right.
So. Um, we will have to just work with Meals on Wheels because um they still can get access to the building, which is not a a problem.
Okay.
Um, because they then do, uh, they serve um Upton and Mandan.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Upton and Dale. Are uh seniors.
Okay. All right.
So what did you decide? So.
I think we decided, yes.
So, because, I mean, that's one of those those things that at least the the message is that, you know, for for this year. Because one of the main things is wanna make sure that, you know, future boards can change the decision. And the personnel policy procedures manual does identify the acknowledged holidays. Um, so this is a special recognition for um employees of the town to be with their families. Um, and we'll be closing these town buildings and um continuing to to. Uh, to pay and for uh those emergency services for their contract, provide them with the equal amount of comp time to be. Worked out under the terms like.
That sounds great.
Sounds good.
I like it.
Me too.
Okay, nice work, team.
Yeah. Okay, so future meeting schedule.
Yeah, isn't it nice to be planning out our.
Look at this, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so so we we've got the, we've got the open the warrant, we've got the Maytown meeting and here we are till.
I love being.
The rest of the year.
It's great.
It's great. Now I have to remember to print this and actually mark my calendars. I went cruising through going. Okay.
All right.
Work, that works for me.
So I forget who's up, uh. Maureen, do you want me to read this one?
Yes, please.
I moved the the board vote to schedule regular meetings for January seventh and twenty first, February fourth and eighteenth. March fourth and eighteenth, April first and fifteenth, May sixth and twentieth, and June third and seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Unanimous.
So for future meeting uh topics, um, I'm already working with Kenny on preparing for. A presentation with the board for the FY twenty six outlook. Uh, like we did last year, sort of recap of twenty four, twenty five is going and looking ahead to revenue and. Uh, expense and other sort of budgetary measures that are coming up and FY six. Um, and um, uh, then other topics that haven't been given a date. You know, for example, we did invite in the Holy Angels reuse crew um. Uh, to come in January, February. Um, I'm coordinating a meeting next week with. Uh, Metro West Regional Transit Authority, uh, follow up to our our recent meetings so we can get an idea of service and. And if we need to make adjustments in our FY twenty six budget. Uh, HR is working with the personnel board for some policies and we're hoping early twenty twenty five to have personnel. Or come in and sort of work with the board on some of those things. Um, and I have not heard back from Lisa Bernash. She had originally wanted me with the board to talk about traffic and. Men and street littering, um, but then asked to postpone, um, and that just hasn't uh. Gotten back as far as rescheduling that discussion. Uh, still working with the state, they're identifying they're gonna be at seventy five percent at the end of January. Uh, let's see if that works, but they um will be planning a public meeting. Um, that the town will be hosting to present those plans once they are. So those are things looking at.
Um, question on the January seventh fiscal year twenty six outlook conversation. I wanna make a ton of work, but I'm curious. How often compares to other similar towns in terms of things like. Right? The the percent we spend on various services, whether it's fire, DPW, et cetera. Compared to similar towns and things like uh. The amount of capital debt we have. As a percent of budget compared to other towns, like, so sort of like, what are the, where's Upton?
Yeah.
What are the benchmarks, right? Cuz there's like benchmarks, like when you buy a house, right? They say like, oh, your mortgage payment should be thirty percent of what your gross income is. Or whatever that number is. So there's, there's, there's similar things for town budgets.
Yeah.
So it's like, where's Upton compared to sort of benchmark, sort of best from the state or whoever publishes benchmarks? And how do we compare to other communities in the town? So that's just sort of a general thing I'm always curious about cuz it just helps us rationalize opportunities. To understand our own finances better.
Now, and that's where a lot of this information is available um directly through DLS.
Exactly.
Dashboard. You know, there's, there's um guidelines as far as, you know, being within a certain percent. Depending on the category.
Exactly.
What to shoot for, you know, it's identified, you know, to have uh at least ten percent. You know, and stabilization of your operating.
Those kinds of things, and like the school budget, right? Like, how much do we spend on, what's our school budget compared to other towns of similar sizes and?
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah, no, I'll I'll definitely talk to uh Kenny about that. Some of that is is uh, it's readily. Available, I'm I'm sure uh Maureen, you've in in your past life been all over that. Available, I'm, I'm sure, uh, Maureen, you've, in, in your past life, been all over that dashboard. D L S dashboard.
I've tinkered on the D L S dashboard, which I think is partly why I'm curious about.
Yes, and that's, that's something I think that's all been done, right? I think. You had one last signature and I think Kenny was, was then submitting after that.
I did.
The LA ball or? Which one does the select one sign? I don't know, we have to go in on that. But it was the LA five.
I don't know.
You had to sign it last year.
Glad I did.
Can I, can I?
I think it's just the chair. But yes, that's.
I have a question, um, the multi-board meeting, we talked about that last year. Why are we waiting until after the May?
Really, this, this could be at any time. The only reason.
Cause I think last year when we talked about it, we got into May and then we're like, well, it's vacation and it's summer and it didn't happen. If I recall correctly.
I think it ended up on our, uh, radar to try to do after Labor Day.
Yeah, and then we ended up with.
And then you end up riding up in the fall. I mean, that's where, um, that's where. February, March and April end up being really busy around preparing for the town meeting.
Right.
Thankfully, it's only May first, but if we give enough head, uh, notice that, hey, May fifteenth, we're planning.
Remind me of the outcome of the multi-board meeting?
So the idea for a multi-board meeting is to, um, sort of discuss town priorities from like on the board level. So conservation plan and E D C, what they think we need to work on so that we can really be planning over the summer. As we do goals and objectives as the board.
Yeah.
And that then carries forward into capital plan, work programs for, for staff and ultimately what would be our F Y twenty seven budget.
Just, you know, I know, like I said, last year, we should set something up earlier rather than later because last year just got away from us.
Yeah.
And so now here we are.
Yes.
I know we, we talked about that like a long time ago, redoing the master plan.
Hmm.
And then we did a bunch of master plans for like rec com and for different, for. Different components that would be part of that that you'd need to do anyway. And we did those things, but I haven't heard an update from the planning.
Town master.
The townwide, the full master plan, which is two thousand and five was the last one, so we're probably right to do one. And like with things like, and the classic, the reason I bring it up is. Like I think about the M B T A communities conversation we had where people, there was some people saying, hey, we should be doing. Development for commuters closer to where the train stations are up off East Street or whatever. So like a conversation around the master plan would help anchor our both. Joe and Mike, as well as the people on the planning board and the conservation commission and the zoning board. To say, okay, let's reaffirm, this is what the town's priorities are. We can all agree. This is sort of what's gonna guide us when we do development of projects or even proposing new zoning bylaws or whatever.
I, I did go to the, uh, the hearings for the M B T A and there was maybe six people.
But nobody.
Nobody shows up, no.
Yeah.
We need water and we need sewer and.
In the master plan, the master plan, and while you don't necessarily know those things, but the master plan.
M B T A, you did.
The master plan requires. Greater community involvement, so it's sort of like forces, like surveys and workshops and things like that, just as part of the process, I think. And I think that will help.
When we borrow money.
Yeah.
Like, well, the senior something, we do an official statement, right?
Yeah.
And if there is a section in there, the, the town planner usually fills out. As far as where the town's headed and what the developments are and the per capita and all that stuff. Have you got a copy of one?
I'll, I'll look through it. I'm sure, I'm sure we had to provide that, um, whether or not it was.
Yeah.
Uh, that's what goes into your ratings and your invoices and all that.
Yeah, I did, I do feel like I remember seeing that when we were doing a client for that at some point from, from Derek, I think. But you're right, that, a lot of that got updated and refreshed, so that's sort of another input into.
Right.
A master plan document, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So I think.
Okay.
Onto approval of the regular meeting minutes for November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Yes, they've been updated. They look beautiful. Um, Joe, I hear a motion.
I move that we approve the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four minutes.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
I.
We're just five minutes behind. We're going into executive session? Okay.
It's great.
Yes.
I think so. Nothing personal, Bill. It was great seeing you.
Bill.
Take care.
Yeah, here we go. I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General R Chapter thirty A. Section twenty one three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Yes.
Fire and EMS association, the board will not reconvene to open session. Roll call vote.
Laura, have I?
Maureen to an L I.
Brett Seymour's eye.